All right.
We're live.
All right, it is seven thirty, April sixth, two thousand twenty. We'll call our city council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're in this session. One wish, Congress.
Indemnities, all, liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approved the agenda and posted in accordance with open meeting law. And here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Sorry, I missed two second to that?
Wait.
Yes, I did.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Littlejegren.
And council president, that is, with the, the current agenda of adding that, um, resolution twenty dash twenty-eight. It is not in the agenda that's on the livestream, but the document is in the, the updated packet that's on the website.
Okay. As the last item, that'd be item D under new business?
Correct.
Resolution twenty, twenty dash twenty-eight.
And the, and the motion would be to, uh, to move on the amended, uh, agenda.
Correct. Thank you. Uh, call roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harys?
Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of March sixteen, two thousand twenty. The regular meeting of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty, and the emergency meeting of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty approved. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, one small correction on the minutes under constituent complaints, and then I was scrolling and I lost it, but it's the part that speaks to receiving a constituent complaint about being able to back on another driveway and mentions I having brought that up, and I believe it was the mayor.
That's correct. Call roll, please.
Um, Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Harys?
Approval of the bills, checks one zero two three three seven through one zero two four one one, only three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and five cents approved. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Knopfle, second by council member Storey. Call roll, please.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Harys?
Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations, there are none. Consent agenda. Building report, March two thousand twenty received. Consumer confidence report, two thousand nineteen received. Differral special assessment, two thousand twenty eight approved. Display of fireworks license, pyrotechnic, dam festival approved. Heritage preservation commission minutes, March two thousand twenty received. Housing and redevelopment authority minutes, March two thousand twenty received. Morrison County attorneys report, January and February, two thousand twenty received. Police report, February, two thousand twenty received. Public works report, February, two thousand twenty received. Seasonal golf employees returning, appoint and approve. Special event parade route, dam to dam bicycle ride, Dave Spurstad approved. Water report, March two thousand twenty received. What is the wish of the council?
Move to receive, approve, all the, uh, the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Hanson. Call roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Harys?
Public hearings and lettings. Public hearing, resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-six, adopt final assessment, roll public improvement three seventy-five. Open, postpone, continue to June first. Not exactly sure what we mean by that. Are we opening the meeting and then postponing the hearing until June first?
Correct, we do have the, uh, the affidavit publication and the affidavit of mailing. Uh, we did send a letter out to the residents, uh, or property owners along, uh, the project indicating that we would postpone the meeting from this evening to a later date. Um, so this evening, we're asking the council to open the public hearing and then postpone it to, uh, June first, or continue it on June first of two thousand twenty.
So we'll open the hearing at seven thirty-seven? And I think I need a motion to postpone or continue to that date?
I would like to make a motion to continue this public hearing in June at some time.
I'll second that.
With that type of, uh, uh, motion, do we need a vote?
Yes.
Call roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Harys?
Lettings. Leaf and brush spring collection, city sanitary commercial, award, Lori.
Um, yes, staff requested quotes to do my annual spring, um, leaf and brush collection. We received quotes. City sanitary was at four thousand ninety-nine dollars. Bob Lemire was at four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Last year, um, the bid was awarded to Bob Lemire at four thousand and fifty dollars. They, for the pickup, is Saturday, May ninth, rain or, um, rain or snow or shine, and, um, they will be leaving the emptied bags, so we've asked that the residents, um, leave a rock or something heavy so that when they empty the bags out, that they can put something on top of them so they don't...
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the low quote for leaf and brush collection.
Second.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Knopfle. Any discussion? Resolution call roll, or, uh, resolution, call roll, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Harys?
Rico MP plotter, Metro Sales Incorporated, public works and engineering, ratify and confirm. Greg?
Yes, good evening. So down in the engineering department, we have a large, large-scale, uh, printers. Our, our plotter that we have, the twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheet, that will print the large, um, engineering plans off of. The one that we purchased in two thousand and twelve, um, has been giving us some, some issues, and we believe it's a print head that are, uh, causing, causing us not to be able to print. And so, we did, uh, inquire to Metro Sales, which provided us with a Rico twenty-two oh one, uh, plotter, uh, in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we are asking the council to ratify and confirm that, uh, that purchase. We do have the plotter here, but it's not, uh, operational at this point, but that'll be here shortly. Um, so if the council will be willing, we would like them to approve, uh, and ratify and confirm the purchase of the Rico twenty-two oh one from Metro Sales out of St. Cloud, and that would be charged to the equipment fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the Rico plotter.
Second.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Storey. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, Greg, are these, are these, uh, plotters, is that a general lifespan of them, about eight years?
It, it is, I mean, electronic equipment doesn't last forever, and so, yeah, eight, ten years is kind of what you'd expect the life of one of these, um, so to last.
Is there a regular maintenance, uh, program that goes with these to maybe last a little longer, or is this including the maintenance program?
So, there's not regular maintenance on them, I mean, you've got to clean print heads, you've got to change the cartridges, various cylinder to, you know, any other printer that you have at, uh, at your house or at a business. Um, the nice thing about with the, the Rico brand, their sales and, uh, service department is, is out of St. Cloud, so it's much easier to get somebody to look at it, whereas the current one that we have is out of the Twin Cities. So you don't have nearly as much drive time with the, with the Ricos. Um, but there, there's not a whole lot of maintenance that can be done to them, uh, once they break, then you repair them, but, uh, the nice part with Rico is they're a lot closer.
I have a couple of questions. One is, could, is there an old one? Will they take it and straighten it or anything, or what do we do with it? Do we just dispose of it? And, and two, is this on a state bid or anything?
So this is not, um, the old one, the scanner still works on it, and so we would likely, um, declare a surplus and then sell it to if anybody's interested in purchasing it. Um, and this was not, I believe, on a state bid. I know, John, you kind of worked with us to get it from Metro Sales.
Co- correct, um, we, we did some price, uh, investigation with, like, source well contracts. Uh, Rico and Metro Sales are currently servicing, um, our printer, we have printer, two printers and, actually, three printers and multi-function unit, um, that have multi-function purposes, uh, throughout the city, uh, from Metro Sales, so they have reps and service people that are regularly here, so it's a lot easier for us to get a service person here, and we've been very, um, very satisfied with the work and services that they have provided for us on those other devices, so that was another reason why we wanted to, um, to keep that, that, to purchase through them so that we could have similar service alignments.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm surprised this thing has lasted as long as it has. Usually, technology catches up a lot sooner than that, and I, I know I'm having a lot of issues with my printer and that, and they're, they're not supporting it anymore. It seems like, at the end of four years, they quit supporting your cell phones and you're, had to force you to buy new stuff, so, uh, I think we're fortunate that it lasted as long as it has.
Anyone else? Call roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Harys?
Trimble T-seven tablet survey controller, frontier precision engineering, ratified and confirmed, Greg?
Thank you. So, over the years, we've had one, uh, tablet that basically runs two pieces of equipment or surveying equipment, one being the total station and the other one being our, our GPS. Um, we are in the process of getting a, a second tablet, um, in order to do some additional surveying so that we can have both pieces of equipment running at the same time. Um, this spring, we've had quite a bit of topo, uh, surveying that we needed to, to complete, and so this will help us out extremely with that. Plus, we'd like to, uh, as I kind of mentioned earlier, to conform with our, uh, stormwater requirements, locate and, uh, survey all of our stormwater, uh, catch basins and, and pipes to get that into, into our software so that we're able to, to do some more modeling on that. The Trimble T-seven will work with both of those, uh, pieces of equipment, and so we are asking the council to ratify and confirm, uh, the purchase of the T-seven in the amount of six thousand sixty-nine dollars, sixty cents plus shipping. Um, it's the same model that we currently have, it's just a very much pared-down one, it doesn't have, um, a lot of the other packages in it, we only need it for the surveying part, so that's why it's, uh, the price is where it's at, and that would be charged to the equipment fund.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Knopfle, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harys?
Old business, amend executive time software license agreement with Tyler Technologies. John?
Thank you, Council President. Um, when we were looking at, uh, we have been looking at upgrading our, our time management, uh, systems and going to an electronic time management, uh, software, uh, we use Tyler Technology products for most of our financial systems and, including payroll. So we were, um, wanting to make sure that the system that we did, uh, purchase conformed to that and, and could communicate with our, our accounting system, so that was why we've, we've looked at, um, utilizing executive time. So we did have this approved previously, um, with the council. Uh, as we've been closer to getting the implementation started, they, we've, we realized that there was some miscommunication in that, um, the executive time that we, we want is a hosted version that has no, um, major upfront costs, but has a higher annual ongoing expense. We've been trying to migrate a lot of our financial systems into, um, hosted environments. Um, they, it, while they do carry more of an annual expense, they do, they don't have nearly the, the upfront capital or any upfront capital, as well as they, they are maintained and, um, and updated consistently. So, part of the problems that we've had in the past are, we get to what we've seen before, we just talked about with the printer, sometimes things aren't even supported anymore, and then we're forced to make these, these upgrades that, when we get into, um, these hosted environments, that's no longer the case. We're not responsible of upgrading all of our hardware on our end to make sure that they're compliant with the, with the new changes in the, in the software. So, that's part of the, the, uh, what we're trying to address with the software in general. Um, this is just to make sure that we get the agreement in alignment with what it is that we, we truly wanted, um, when we approved it.
What's the wish of the council? Move to approve. Second. Motion by council member Storey, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harys?
New business. Airport commission recommendations. Greg, I don't know if you want to do these one at a time, or you want to do all of them at once and then we'll go through them?
I'll kind of run through all of them at, at once and then we can do, uh, the vote, the vote on each one individually, if that's all right.
That's fine.
So, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven is a grant agreement with the state of Minnesota. Um, out at the airport, we have a fuel dispenser that's twenty-plus years old, um, it started to give us issues, uh, we see a lot of them in the, in the wintertime with things freezing up. Um, our belief is that water is getting in behind the, the cabinet or the electronics and, and causing issues back there with freezing up the, the pumps and potentially even the, uh, the, the electronics on it. And so, we reached out to the state of Minnesota to see if they would have anything available to help us, uh, replace that. They do have one. Um, the grant split is a seventy-thirty split, so the state would pick up seventy percent, and then the local share would be thirty percent. Um, and keep in mind again that our share, the local share is split fifty-fifty with the county, so ours would be, uh, roughly forty-five hundred dollars, and the county's portion would be forty-five hundred dollars, and we share the, the expenses at the, at the airport. Uh, that price was from OD equipment, um, and so they have been the ones that have been doing the, uh, the workout, uh, at the airport for our fuel system as far as checking for leaks every year, um, and, and making sure that that thing is running for us. Um, the third item on the agenda there, under the airport, is the crosswind runway. Um, as I mentioned before, we're looking at constructing that this summer. On the very south end of it, um, we originally did not have a turnaround, uh, for the airplane, so when they landed and they get down to the end, they didn't have any space to turn around, and so there was some additional work in there, um, and, and KLJ was not the original designer of that, but when they looked at it, they thought it made sense, uh, the FAA agreed that it made sense to put in a turnaround so that when they get down to the end, they can turn around, come back, and get to the, to the hangars and such. And so we are asking for approval on task order number seven for KLJ to do that, uh, that work as well.
So we have resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. The airport improvement grant is for the grant to replace the fuel pump, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Part two is to go ahead and have OD equipment do it?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're on nine eight re- number one, resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-seven. Someone would want to make a motion in a second for that?
I'll make the motion, Mr. President, to approve resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Knopfle, second by councilman, excuse me, motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Knopfle. Any discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Harys?
Number two, airport fuel dispenser, OD equipment. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Knopfle, second by council member Hanson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Harys?
Task order seven, additional work, crosswind runway, KLJ engineering. What is the wish of the council? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Littlejegren. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Harys?
Item B, license agreement, ZEF Energy Electric Vehicle Charging Station authorized. John?
Um, Council President, I would also ask that this, uh, be postponed to the next meeting. Um, our attorneys are reviewing the site use agreement and want to clarify some, uh, of the language in the indemnification and other parts to this, this agreement before we give a final approval. So I would recommend a postponement until the next meeting.
Council President, I move to postpone, um, the issue with, uh, the charging stations until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion by council member Lundberg, second by council member Goschek. Roll call, please.
Uh, just one second.
Hercock?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Littlejegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Harys?
Temporary COVID-nineteen actions, utility billing, et cetera, approved, Lori.
Um, yes, so council, before you tonight, we have a couple of requests re- directly related to the COVID-nineteen, um, issues that were in our, in the midst of. Um, one of the, or the first item for consideration would be to not, um, penalize utility bills that were due on April fifth, and then the next ones that are due on May fifth. We would, um, still send out late notices along with the note, just being as a friendly reminder, your bill is past due. Um, and that, it tends to be a good thing because there are times when people send checks in and we don't get them, so this is a way for them to follow up, to see that, um, that we did, or that we did not receive the payments. So, but again, there would be no penalties applied April fifth and May fifth. Um, and then we also would, um, recommend that we don't disconnect the water for, we did not disconnect in March, and then again in April and May, that we do no disconnections, um, for those three months. We're also requesting that the council instruct staff to remit half of the annual contribution to the Friends of the Pine Grove Zoo, Morrison County Animal Humane Society, and Senior Citizens, Inc. Um, we typically pay them quarterly, and the first quarter would go out in April, but, um, for right now, we're asking, uh, permission to send out half of the annual contribution. Um, and then the final thing, um, from base, from the memo would be to suspend the rent payments from the Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau for April, May, and June. Um, and I believe the CDB has made their April payment. If they have, we will just, you know, say three months then and not collect for May, June, and July.
What is the wish of the council? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Knopfle. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, um, on the utility billing, uh, billing, for people that are, are viewing this, um, I think we need to really put out that this isn't, you know, something that they can just not pay because a- afterwards, they're going to end up owing two or three months after this is all over, correct?
Correct, so that's in the, in the letter that we send out, I mean, we're certainly going to say that, you know, we're not in any way, shape, or form, um, you know, deleting or suspending their bill, it's just that we're not penalizing it for right now, and that at, at some point, I mean, they should pay what they can pay because they're going to have to get caught up at some point.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, for those that may be viewing this, like, that this isn't where something they can just say, well, you know what, they're going to forgive this billing, um, because sooner or later, they will have to pay it, so if they can pay it, they, it, it would be wise to do it on time.
Correct.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson? Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wiltigren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Harys?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-eight, I don't know what its title, Lori, but I think this is you.
Um, so this is, the, the resolution is approval of loan modifications for heritage preservation, housing and redevelopment authority, and small cities development loans. So we currently have, um, the Heritage Preservation Commission has a couple of outstanding loans. The H.R.A. has one outstanding loan, and Small Cities has, I think, seven total, five or seven total outstanding loans. So, um, what this resolution would authorize is that we would, um, defer payments on these loans for three months. So again, they wouldn't be paying April, May, June, or May, June, July. They're, because some have already made their April payment. But, you know, we would just be deferring them. It wouldn't accumulate or accrue any additional interest during that time period. Um, many of the loans are at very low interest or zero percent interest, um, at any rate. But it, this would just allow us, allow them not to make payments for the next couple of months until their businesses can get back open and running again. And again, we would ask that, you know, if they can make the payments, please do so, but if they, if it's a struggle for them, you know, we will, we will defer them.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-eight, deferring loans, uh, for a few months here.
Second.
Sorry, I missed who that was?
Hanson.
Either, either one.
Motion by councilmember Goschek, second by councilmember Hanson, any discussion? Resolution, call or roll please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Wiltigren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
I abstain.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Harys?
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Mr. President, uh, if I could just briefly, uh, address the fact that, uh, E.D.A., Economic Development Authority, is working with small businesses, uh, within the community, of course, um, trying to help through, help them through some trying times, and it's kind of a work in progress, but at this time, we're offering five thousand dollar, uh, loans. And, uh, you know, I'm getting a lot of input back from the business people, and, uh, we've got a couple other things going, um, where we might be able to use some other dollars. So just want you to know that we're doing what we can to help the downtown businesses, and if they have any questions, they can contact John, Lori, or Caroline Anderson, or myself. John, you got anything you want to throw in on that?
Um, that if you are interested in that, make sure to check out the City of Little Falls website. Um, there are links there, and for the application process for the small business, the link will lead to a, an email pop-up. So that's, that's to request it from, from staff. Um, we just want to be sure that, uh, we're not getting outside scammers, uh, coming in and making these requests and inundating our, our process because we want to make sure that these go out legitimately to small businesses in the city and process them as quickly as possible because we know these dollars may be important bridges into getting into the state and federal programs, um, as their, their lead times are a lot longer than what ours could be.
Did just want to add, Mr. Mary, you said downtown businesses, it's Little Falls businesses. They don't have to be downtown to qualify. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, would, would the city, uh, nine oh one C, uh, type businesses, is this where they can go to, or would that be a different location, different one?
No, Council President, if I may, um, I think you're, you're, you're asking about five oh one C-three nonprofits or five oh one C-sixes. Uh, no, they are not unfortunately el- they are unfortunately not eligible for these dollars. Um, through, through the, the funds that we're u- we're using from the, our E.D.A. pools, they wouldn't be eligible, so those weren't approved at this time. It is something that, um, we are also looking at what we can do, um, utilize for E.D.A. dollars, um, to, to help out nonprofits as well.
Any announcements from anyone? Not, we will adjourn our meeting at eight oh four. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Yeah.
You too.
You too.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, President, Council.